First thing on our agenda is to have the adoption on the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Under item F1, we will see where we have the appointment of members to the CARES Act Committee. We would ask under that, that under the county representatives, that you have Mrs. Colers as the representative and Mr. Carter as the alternate.
Thank you, sir. Any other additions or deletions?
Mr. Chairman, I have given you just a revised one a couple of minutes ago to add a few items to the closed session motions.
That was K1 and K3, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the agenda with the changes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion at all? Emily, could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Oates?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colers?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Next on our agenda is the public comment period. That's going to last for 45 minutes. We've got a timer here for everybody to see. We're going to give everybody three minutes. At the end of three minutes, it will ding and we'll go on to the next person. And you'll run that for me, Mrs. Colers? Thank you. Mrs. Shiroki, has anyone signed up, please?
Oh, one person, Mr. Chairman, Melissa Chapelwhite.
Greetings, I have a handout. There's one copy for the record and a copy for each supervisor. Thank you, Ms. Chapelwhite.
Mrs. Chapelwhite, are you going to be talking about something that's on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, whoops, excuse me. That's in my remarks, it's item E, reports.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, go ahead and restart her time, please.
Thank you. I don't know if I should keep this on since I'm by the microphone or not. I'm not sitting. All right. Greetings, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Melissa Chapelwhite. Dogwood Farm Road is where I live in the Shenandoah Farms Sanitary District. Two of the longstanding board members were here when I made presentations back in 2009 and 2010. But since there are three new board members that I hadn't met yet and may not know the history of Shenandoah Farms, I did a little bit, made a couple of copies of an attachment. So there's a couple of attachments to my letter today that I'm presenting. The first attachment is from a board meeting in 2013 when the deputy county administrator made a presentation where he recapped some of the history of the Shenandoah Farms Sanitary District and why it's important, what had been done since the county took it over effective July 1st, 2010, for the new fiscal year. So that's when the county took it over, took over the management and so forth, all the funds and so on, which was done after a group of concerned citizens made a bunch of presentations. And that's not important now because there's been a decade since the county took it over and that's really the focus now. But Shenandoah Farms is important to Warren County because it's huge. Number one, it's the largest subdivision in the Commonwealth of Virginia in terms of geographical area. And two, thousands of people live there. So they're all taxpayers in addition to sanitary district fee payers. And some of them are a little concerned these days that things, things started off great when the county first took over management. A sanitary district manager was hired, a professional with all kinds of qualifications, and he also communicated with everybody. He set up an email list where anybody could get on it and then he would update us and just send it out, you know? He only had to do one and he could send it out to everybody who wanted to know. It was great. He was always over, working on the roads, checking things out, talking to people. Great. Unfortunately, he left after a year to take another job opportunity. No one was ever hired to take his place. And things kind of started sliding after that to where now nothing's getting done. In fact, for a few years, road projects that were supposed to get done just haven't been being done. And there's been no communications, the reporting has been very irregular, nobody knows where the money's really going. That was three minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. In that case, I will stop. You have your attachments. One of them is the one I mentioned. The other one is copies of emails that I've recently sent and not received any reply to requesting an account. Thank you very much for your time.
Mrs. Shiroki, is anyone else signed up?
Not for items on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. If no one else would like to speak, that is signed up, we'll go on to the next item on our agenda. The reports from outside agencies, the Virginia Department of Transportation, Mr. Carter.
Sorry, I can't talk with that thing on. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. VDOE's report for this month, the work that we've had performed in August and what we plan to do in September. We began replacement of a deteriorated spillway on Route 659 Harnisty Road. We will complete that replacement this month. We've performed skin patching on Routes 622 Buck Mountain Road, 649 Brown Town Road, and we've repaired slope failure on Route 603 Housfield Road. We've replaced pipes on Route 655 East, which is John Marshall Highway. We have completed our second round of mowing on the primaries and began our secondary routes. We will complete the secondary routes, our second round on secondaries this month. We've conducted grading stone applications on the non-hard surface roads at various locations that will continue this month. And we will also be bringing the residency ditching crew back into Front Royal area and we will be performing more ditching operations on various routes this month. We will also be doing equipment dry runs, which is essentially inspection looking up our winter equipment on winter operations. Hopefully, they won't be needed, but we'll be ready for it anyway. Our rural rustic work in Warren County. We have completed the construction portions of Downing Farm Road, which is 623, and Panhandle Road, which is Route 613. And we are beginning this week to work on Rocky Hollow Road, 628. Now, the surface treatment is scheduled to be placed, weather permitting, on Downing Farm and Panhandle beginning the week of, or be completed the week of September the 11th. Of course, that depends on the weather. We have to have favorable weather to put that surface treatment down. Both roads overran the estimate, okay? About $180,000 over on both of those roads and due to the additional grading and tree trimming that we had to do, they were pretty closed in. As such, we're going to have to reduce the length of what we have done on Hollow, or what we plan to do on Rocky Hollow and do it in two phases, with a second phase being done under budget next year. So I don't know exactly where that reduction will take place yet. We're doing the calculations now. And in Cawthorn Mill Road, which we're doing that short piece in there, we're going to do that with state forces and we will recoup some of our over expenditures from that project because we can do it cheaper with our own people. I hope that sometime in early January that we will be able to sit down with the board and be able to discuss what your six-year plan's going to look like and get the board's input, see if their priorities are the same or whether they'd like to change them.
When did you say you want to get together?
Sometime in January.
Okay.
When we'd like to do that. And prior to that, I would hope that the board would be looking at a prioritization program for their remaining road, roads that they want to. In other words, we would like to see you prioritize them based on where you're going to get the biggest bang for your buck because bucks are going to be short. Are there any issues the board would like for me to address or check with?
Any concerns? Because I've got one or maybe two. I have not heard anything back from anybody about the, this painting schedule for Fairdown Road.
A painting schedule?
Yeah. Because we were, that is, when it gets wet, you just basically lose that road. And the citizen, the citizens over there had been complaining and I had brought that forward a couple of times.
I will see that you have a response this week.
I'm sorry?
I will see that you have a response this week.
Absolutely, great, thanks. I would want to be able to tell those people that are asking about it.
And please, when you, when you ask for something from us that you haven't heard in what you consider to be a reasonable time, don't wait to the next meeting. Please feel free to call me.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
See, there's, there's still plans for the turning lane at Fort Valley Road, 678 and Route 55. Is that correct?
Uh, a turning lane?
Yeah.
You know, I know at one time we talked about that. I will have to find out for you, Mr. Fox.
Okay.
Any other questions, concerns or anything? Thank you, Mr. Carter. Oh.
I just want to thank you and your crew, you know, for your continuous work. You guys do a lot with a little and I understand that.
Thank you.
And he knows I'm always in touch with him, so, and I appreciate that you're always so patient with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next is the Department of Social Services, Beth Rivas. Good morning, Beth.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is probably my first and last time to come before you. Hopefully, you know that the, my replacement is coming on the 8th of September. His name is John Mars. He comes from New Kent County where he's been a director for six years. I think he's going to be a wonderful director and member of this community. He has roots here, he has family here, well, his wife does, and so I think he'll be a really special and good director for the department. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit today about the big picture in the Department of Social Services and the kind of impact that we have on this community. 10% of Warren County residents live in poverty. 14% of the children in Warren County live in poverty. We served 8,500 unduplicated residents in 2019 in just three benefit programs. 7,800 in Medicaid, 4,500 in SNAP, and 400 in TANF, which is the Cash Assistance Program. We infused into the Warren County economy $55.6 million in these three program areas. And the reason I talk about that is not because I want people to be poor, I want as much federal money to come into this county and state as we can so that the county resources can be used for the things that, that the federal government and the state doesn't cover. And so the cost of the locality for that $55.6 million was $82,000 or less than point one, or about point one percent, which I think is significant. Another million dollars for all the other programs, which includes energy assistance, childcare subsidies, foster care adoptions, adult services expenditures, and child protective services expenditures. Approximately $3 million has been on the operations and administrative costs. This is where the largest portion of the county part comes into play. As a percentage of our total budget, our mission administrative costs are 4.8%, which is a bargain by anybody else's measure. Nonprofits usually run between 15 and 30% and most businesses run about 30% of admin overhead. The surrounding localities, I've given you a comparison which shows where, you know, Clark is the highest, 9.7, Shenandoah's 4.3, Page is 4.3, we're about 4.8. But when you break that ratio down by the administrative cost per staff member, we're at the bottom of that list. Some localities spend almost 20,000 more on administrative costs for their employees than we do. Just within our own county, eight out of 10 of my social workers make considerably less than the starting salary of Warren County teachers with a 200-day contract, yet they have the same educational requirements. These women, women and men face challenges and situations that most people cannot even imagine. A far more appropriate comparison is that Warren County's social works, school social workers start at 65,500 on a 250-day contract. Not one of my social workers or their supervisors make anywhere close to that amount. Our starting salaries are $20,000 less. My workers work 10 more days a year and have to rotate on-call 365 days a year where they have to be available from 5:00 PM when we close until 9:00 AM the next day and 24 hours a day on every weekend and every holiday, including Christmas. The supervisors have to share on-call, their supervisory on-call duties, and they have half a month of one, half a month the other. And there isn't a call that the social workers go out on, then those social work supervisors are not contacted to oversee what happens and what's going on with those serious incidences. And when we're called out in the middle of the night, I want to thank law enforcement because almost always they go with us and protect us, which is an amazing benefit. The county and County Sheriff's Department and the Front Royal Police do an amazing job of keeping my people safe and we appreciate that every day. In conclusion, we acknowledge that every job in the county is important and valuable and this, but the services and benefits staff provide an invaluable service to our most vulnerable citizens and troubled families. Our child protective services and adult protective services are designated first responders by law. Budget time is coming. Please keep these important employees in mind when you're making judgments about the county's limited resources and making their, please make their salary adjustments a priority. They have been overlooked and undercompensated for far too long. Our vacancy rate is dangerous and unsustainable. At one point, we had one child protective service worker. So when that person was out and another call came in, the supervisor had to leave. And we had to ask for help from the state to just maintain the barest minimum of services. When a child comes into foster care, sometimes the only person in their life that is a constant is their social worker, but not in our case because our turnover is so great that they often have four, five workers on their case before they age out of foster care or are placed with a relative or family. I appreciate your time and your attention. I had been my privilege to work in Warren County once again, and I've tried to do my best to keep things going and just even work on some new initiatives, which hopefully will continue long after I leave. Thank you so much. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Does the board have any questions?
I do. Ms. Rivas, how many people do you have that are, so how much are you understaffed? What's the ideal number and where are we at this point?
We're probably, ideal number's around 50 and we're probably at 42.
So we're eight, eight down?
Yes. That's my admin people behind me.
Okay.
Yeah. And I haven't, we've got, we've got all those positions advertised. I wasn't particularly comfortable with filling all of those because my replacement, I wanted him to have a say in who he hires.
Do you have applicants?
Yes, we do. But, but some of those vacancies are as recent as two weeks ago or a month ago. We hired one young lady and she worked maybe six weeks and quit, so.
It's a very difficult job.
It's a very difficult job.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Where do, I see the surrounding all counties admin percentages. Warren County's at 4.8, Clark's at 9.7. What's the biggest difference there? Is it just sheer population in the county?
Well, Clark's a very small locality compared to us as far as population goes. So it's just, this admin is really mostly salaries. So that's the difference. It's what people get paid is the difference in these administrative costs because the cost of locality is mostly in salaries and overhead. The federal government, the state government make the smallest contribution to those things and the largest contribution to programs. The federal government and the state are 95% or even 97, almost 99% of my program areas, benefits, Medicaid, food stamps, TANF. They pay all of that. But the locality's contribution to the Department of Social Services is mostly in salaries and overhead. And so that's the difference that you're seeing there, that per employee is, is the difference and it's about salary.
Pardon my ignorance, but can you not, does the federal government, can they not compensate that partly?
Oh, they do, they do. They have a, they have a small percentage.
Can you make that pie any bigger?
That would not, that's way above my pay grade.
Okay.
That's a decision at the federal level. It's how much money they give us.
Okay.
And those allotments have, were decided 20 years ago and they haven't been changed because if you change the allotment that the state gives to the localities, then some localities would get a lot more money and some localities would get less and they'd have to fire people or lay off people. So we've asked for years for those, to look at those numbers and see how, this is what we control at the state level and that they haven't been willing to do it because it would create such havoc across the state in local budgets.
So you're looking for the county to make up that bit of difference?
It's not, it would, yeah. Actually, the cost would be most of the county out. I mean, that's just a fact. But it's the same in every locality. Everybody gets so much federal money, everybody gets so much state money, everybody gets so much local money. But the truth of the matter is y'all control our salaries within ranges. The state sets the ranges and y'all control what we pay our folks. And the salary study bears out everything that I have said.
Okay.
I, I would just like to, because I don't want to ask a lot of questions here and make this time longer, but I'd like to bring them in for a work session so that they can sit down and break this down to us before budget time so we have a better understanding of what state gives you, what federal gives you, and we can work that out. When, when you come in for a budget and you just simply, what I've witnessed the last two years, I don't get a real good understanding of each of these components to break it down. So I don't know about the rest of the board, but I, I would appreciate, you know, coming in, sitting down and explaining it, explaining how many CPS workers you have, how many APS workers you have, and where we need to be. And I think doing that pre-budget would make budget go a little faster as well.
And I'm sure John will be happy to do that for you.
Well, we'll let John come in and we'll try to set that up with him as soon as we can.
That sounds great. Or, I'd be glad to do it. I'd be glad to do it before I leave, but, you know, it's going to be his department really quickly, so. And I'm sure he'll feel the same way I do.
Whoever, I would just like to have a meeting with you all and get a better understanding of all of this.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Next is the public schools, Warren County Public Schools, Chris Ballinger.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How's everybody doing today? This is just documentation.
Thank you, Doctor.
This is all on our website anyway, but I know a lot of times people do not go to the website and like think so. It's just easy to bring this, since we're going to be discussing this today. And I just want to kind of go over our plan, where we're at, current, current status. You know, we're here because six months ago, on March 13th, schools were shut down for initial two weeks, but then wound up being for the rest of the year. So when you look at our, our plan, this encompasses this six months of non-instruction that, that we're looking at going forward, along with a lot of other factors that we had to decide which direction we needed to go, plus the guidance from the governor's school phase guidance document and the VDOE's Recovery, Redesign and Restart Plan. So when we look at our, our guidance, we are still held to all of the code and the standards of quality that the Virginia Department of Education has established for years. Right now, the only modification that we have is that a few weeks ago, they notified schools that at the end of the year, every school in the Commonwealth will receive a designation of accreditation waived. So that doesn't mean we're still not going to probably take the SOLs, but they're going to waive accreditation again, just like they did this year because SOLs were shut down because of schools being closed. So accreditation for all divisions across the Commonwealth was accreditation waived. And they've already made that decision because of schools having to go hybrid, some going all virtual, and just all of the chaos, they have went ahead and made that decision that for this next year, for the, for this year, the following year will be accreditation waived as well. That is really the only waiver or guidance that we've received that, that alleviates us from any of the other coded requirements. And so we had to take all of those into account as we developed our plan too, because you still have your staffing ratios, you still have your, the number of students in a, in a classroom, but then you add on everything else from the Virginia Department of Education and the governor's guidance on limitations on buses and various things. So as we go through this, you know, we have two models and I'll kind of walk you through as I, I scroll through this. Our models are on page, on page three and you can see that there's really two, in-person or remote instruction or virtual instruction. And so, you know, parents have the option if they want to do a full virtual option or, and then the hybrid is some in-person and some remote. So our students will receive five days of instruction. It's just some of that might be remote or virtual, some of that may be in-person. And a lot of that depends upon parents' choice. And a lot of that depends upon parents' choice, the room that we have within our buildings, transportation schedule, you know, transportation limitations. So there's a lot of things that went into determining in-person, which type of model we were going to go with. So we wanted to be sure that we offered as much as possible to our community. When you look at page four, that's basically the breakdown. So because we've had a six-month layout, layover between March and now, between schools being closed, you look at our little kids. We know that, one, you have to have the foundational skills and the foundational skillset in order to, to do anything when it comes to education. And if those skills are not developed at the elementary level, then you're going to see that in the middle and high school, which could also lead to dropouts later on. If, if, because once you miss something in instruction, it's tough sometimes to recover. And so right now, what, what our model is, we wanted to make sure that our elementary students, we bring them in in-person as much as possible and offer that, because we know those foundational skillsets have to be developed. So when you look at this, we have pre-K through five, we'll bring them in Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and again, that's parent choice. Parents can choose to do the full virtual if they want to, and we'll provide that. But those that want the in-person, they will come in Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then Wednesday is going to be a remote learning for those students. That also allows us to, to do a deep clean within our schools, because with all the mitigation strategies we have to put in place, we have to make sure that we have an opportunity to go through and really just, just spray everything down, just to help mitigate, you know, COVID as far as what we're facing right now. When you look at the six through eight and then the nine through 12, those students are on AB schedule, and so if you're an A student, your in-person day would be Monday, but then you would receive four days of virtual. If you're a B, you'd receive four days of virtual and one day of in-person. And with this model, we have the opportunity to, every two weeks, to review it and to add days to the middle and high school as, one, we look at our schedules with transportation, our limitations there, if we have those. But we're going to review those every two weeks and determine how can we increase, starting with our middle school and working our way up to the high school, their days of in-person. When you look at page five, Blue Ridge Tech Center, and of course, all of our students, we, we've had to take everything into consideration, but one of the modifications we're doing at Blue Ridge Tech Center, our year two and three students are going to drive in the morning. So if you're in Warren County, they're going to report first to Blue Ridge Tech, and then they will go that, after those, those first two blocks, then they're going to go to their high school for, for classes for the remainder of the day. Now, your year one students, we're going to bus them in on Wednesday. So we've had to modify every schedule we, we have, and one, it's based upon transportation. Transportation has, the limitations that's been placed on us because of the social distancing and the, and the face covering requirements have really taken a toll on what schools can do. So you have a 77-passenger bus that typically, if you take a run down to Brown, Brown Town, and you're able to, to fill that bus full last year with 66 students, well, now you cannot do that. You may get 20 on a bus, taking that same bus that the year before you, you placed 66 students on. Now you can only place 20 because of social distancing, one per seat, face covering requirement. So now it may take two buses to run two routes to get that same load of students that it took one bus to get done last year. And so we really have to look at the, the logistics of getting our students to school this year, and, and over half of the students in, in Warren County have take transportation through the schools. So it's a 50-50 split between parents and bus. So on page six, that kind of also looks at our schedules when you, we had to adjust school start times, just because we're maybe having, we have buses that may run two route, two runs to pick up the same, or run the same route that they did last year. So we have schools starting at eight o'clock, nine o'clock, because that's, that's a variance to allow buses to, to get back. You know, we will be dropping students off, starting if, if, for instance, LFK starts at eight o'clock, students will start arriving at 7:30. Our staff will have to be on, on hand. No more can you take those students and, most of the time, schools would, would take them to a gym, and, and it's just a big holding area, or maybe the cafeteria until school would start, but you cannot do that anymore. So now those, those students and those teachers have to be in their classrooms when that first busload arrives, because now those students need to go to that classroom and be ready to go. Usually you would have a holding area, they would do activities or, or maybe they would have breakfast in the cafeteria, and then when the bell rang, then everybody would go to, go to class. But now it's a little bit different, so that's another modification that we had to make. So when you look at our mitigation strategies on page seven, there's, there's a couple pages there of mitigation strategies. And so, you know, of course, we're working with, with Sidexo to help, they, they are providing the wipes, you know, within the classrooms to help us with mitigation. We are increasing the number of janitorial staff during the school day. So we're taking some of those that may have reported in the evenings before, bringing them in now during the daytime to give us a, an opportunity to really mitigate the, and clean those highly touched surfaces more often and frequent, so that we can keep the spread of, of the virus down. And so there's a lot of things that we're doing to bring in additional resources to help with our strategies, to make sure that we, we keep our facilities clean and that we have good practices. Some other mitigation strategies, of course, you, you go into a classroom now, and instead of having 20 desks in a classroom, there may be 12. Each desk is socially distanced with six feet of distance between, between each student. And so you, you now take a classroom that you had 20 students in, and you can put 10 in this room, but now you have to put the other half of the, the class in another room. And so we are pulling our faculty and staff from all over, just, just to, roles are changing just because of the mitigation strategies that we have to put in place. So now you have, for instance, if you have a second grade classroom that had 20 students in it, you could put that, all of those students in that one, in that one classroom last year, well, now you have two classrooms. And so we have to bring in additional resources as far as, it's not bringing in additional, it is repurposing resources that are already within the school system. So we may be having our, for instance, the art teacher may be coming in and circulating around from class to class to help with, with keeping a, you know, a certified staff member, or maybe an instructional assistant is with a group while the teacher is with one group, and they're rotating back and forth. So you have a lot of different things that we are having to go through to make sure that we keep our schools open when we open next Tuesday. Again, there, there are some mitigation strategies with, with our bus, with transportation, some various things that we're doing there. Sorry, throat's getting a little dry. So child nutrition, you know, this is a big component of school, you know, and we know that, as I believe, and I, I'm just going to try to remember off the top of my head, maybe I have it in, in my notebook here, but since the closure last year, I believe we served around 130,000 meals. And so the good news that we just received yesterday was guidance from USDA that they're going to allow schools to continue that summer feeding, and we're going, we're, we're going to meet today to discuss how that's going to affect us. So now we can continue our feeding program and provide meals for students and family members that, that maybe have those food insecurities and, and maybe those that don't, that, that if, if students want to take meals home, then we'll be able to, to take those home. So that guidance, again, was just released yesterday, and we're going to work through it today to figure out the best way we can, thank you, sir, the best way that we can make sure that we can provide a quality nutritional program to our students, even for those that are virtual, and how we can get that done, whether it be through transportation, whether it be through going ahead and having our, sorry. Our regional drop-offs in, in various areas. So, you know, we're, we're continuing to make sure that child nutrition is a main portion of, of the school system, and we're going to make sure that those students are fed. And then again, technology, and I want to thank the board of supervisors.
Can I, is that K through 12, or is that just the ones that were designated as needing that service?
No, that'd be K through 12.
You're going to go through everybody again.
That'd be, that, that, because currently under the summer food program, I believe that was everybody, everybody. And so that is why we're excited, because from that guidance that we received, that we would be able to give that to everybody.
Good.
All the way through December, I think they're extending it through December 31st. And then technology, and I want to thank the board of supervisors for helping with this. This has been a huge cost, but, you know, we have added, we, we have had to make sure that we have an LMS in place, we have devices in place, to make sure that the virtual component is a robust program. I don't think that there was a school in the Commonwealth that was prepared for March 13th. And this has been really a blessing to schools, because it's all, it's, it's forced school divisions to really rethink and restructure the way school is within their community. And so technology, of course, is one of the big components, and now we will be one-to-one pre-K through 12, and be able to provide devices to every single student, so that that virtual component will, will be something that, that will be a good, robust solution to family members that maybe choose, that want to do the, the home instruction versus the in-person. So, and then, of course, the LMS, the learning management system, you know, having that foundation that provides that good platform for students to be able to log into and teachers to work on, so that, you know, videos can be added, homework assignments can be completed, and various things to make sure that, that there is that interaction and that connection between student and teacher. So I'll kind of sum up here, I know I'm taking a lot of time, but some things that we need to, to consider, this is new instruction. If you don't do the work, you're not going to get the credit, you're not going to pass the class. That is a lot different than what students experienced in March. March guidance was their grade could not drop below their grade as of March 13th. It could only increase through additional work that was being done over the closure. So you had students that, some students did nothing, some students stayed on task. Now it is different. They have to do the work in order to get the credit, in order to be promoted, or even to graduate. So, so students have to understand that this work needs to be done. And that's one of the, one of the big differences, I think, that we're going to really battle, because the closure didn't, didn't really, it didn't help us because of the perception, that is now the perception of what virtual learning is, when truly it's not. That was just the guidance that we had to follow at that point in time. And so we also have time-based, task-based attendance. We're going to be looking at, our attendance model is having to change, because you may have students that may not be able to join in on a, on a video call at nine o'clock, but you know what? They did the assignment and watched the recorded video at six o'clock that afternoon. And so, yes, that student was present, because they had to, they still watched the video and they still did the assignment. So we're having to look at a lot of different things, and so attendance is no longer going to be a day, a daily thing. We are going to take it daily, but it's going to be drawn out, and it's going to be something that we're going to have to stay on top of every week to make sure that we are doing our due diligence in keeping track of our students, especially those that are in the virtual world. Over the last couple of weeks, our teachers have been, been training on the new LMS using the devices. Starting today, today, Wednesday, and Thursday, we are having student and parent trainings. We are offering those virtual, we're offering those in-house. Schools should have been in contact with, with the families within their, their schools, within their school site to, to schedule in-person trainings, if they wanted those in-person trainings. So this is going to be an ongoing call for us as far as offering those trainings on a weekly or monthly or basis. Now also, we have a, a call center that, that will be, that has been set up, and I want to thank Mr. Grant for putting that together and, and all those that are going to be working on that, to where there's, there'll be a hotline to where parents and, and students can call if they have technical support. So we're, we're offering and doing a lot of different things in, in our educational system that we're excited about. Now, yes, has it been stressful? It's been very stressful. Everybody in the school system is stressed at this point in time. I'm sure, and, and all the families are stressed. This is, this is a tough time in education, but educators are good problem solvers. We will do the best job that we can do, and we will make sure that we provide a good quality product that everybody can be proud of. And in closing, I just want to remind everybody that next Tuesday, you're going to see those big yellow buses on the road, you're going to see those students possibly walking in the streets. We, we will have, we will be starting school September 8th. It's been six months, really, since, since we've had, had that going on with our, our students walking or riding their bikes and buses on the road, realizing that, yes, I need to stop when the, when the stop sign is, is out, just to remind people that, that, you know, be careful and, and keep our, our little ones and our students in mind as we start next Tuesday. Thank you. Any questions?
I just have one, if you will. Born to school back in many, many years ago, our space was very limited in our school system in Warren County, and a lot of the classes were held in auditorium, laboratory, or whatever space was available. But since that time, you know, we've really tried to build the school's capacity much higher. And so by distancing your students, are you having enough space to make up for the, the need that you need to keep the operations going?
We have, space is, space is a premium, I will admit. We do, we have reverted back to some of that. There are some of our gyms, our auxiliary gyms in some of our schools that have been converted to classrooms. We had to move, because we did not have space at, at three elementary schools, so those three elementary school fifth grade class had to move to the middle school, where we did have some space. So we're just having to shuffle some things around, but we're using every single space that is available to make sure that we can get as many students in as possible.
Same as we did many, many years ago.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Got a question. School board has a meeting tomorrow night?
Yes, sir.
And I think we've been invited to that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And the reason being?
Seven PM.
Okay.
We will, number one, Davenport will be at the beginning of the meeting to talk about the school bond reissue, refine, reissuing the school bonds, and immediately after that, there will be a financial report on the And immediately after that, there will be a financial report on the status of the system as it relates to COVID and so forth, so that you have an update on the school financing.
Okay, I guess for Mr. Hamm, if we all attend, does that constitute a meeting that has to be advertised?
Yes, if, if three of you do.
We have it on the website that you will be attending.
Okay.
As I mentioned before, this will not be your meeting, you will just be in attendance. So we have advertised that on the website that, that we will be there, but it's not going to be a...
So to clarify, Mr. Carter, for FOIA purposes, it's a meeting, which means it has to be on your website, it has to be posted in the office of the county administrator and in the, on the bulletin board as a meeting, but it's not a meeting that you're going to take any action at, but it does need to be posted as a meeting for FOIA purposes.
Right, okay. I mean, but there again, I know it's the school board's meeting, but we'll be in attendance and I would assume that we'd have the opportunity to ask questions if we wanted to. So there again, I just want to make sure we're going to do what needed to be done as far as FOIA and all those things.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
Dr. Ballinger, what accommodations are being made for children whose parents need to work and can't be home with them for virtual instruction?
Oh, I know that we are working through and we, we've actually met with, with the, with the county and with, with the town of Front Row to, to talk about various options as far as with childcare, that childcare is a premium. We, we are working through, through solutions to try to, to help out where we can. But childcare is going to be an issue and, you know, I know that we, we have been in contact with, with our providers in the county and we continue to work through that solution. But we, we can do so much with the space and with the staff that we have. And we're, we feel that we are providing a good opportunity for, for students that, that will be able to be there or for the in-person. But when you look at individual families that have students that, where the parents both work, that's, that's a tough solution and we're still trying to work through some of those. But again, it comes down to our, our partners within, within the community. You know, what is their limitations as well? You know, they have to follow some of the same guidelines that we have to follow. So do they have space to take students or are they limited to the number of students that they can take now due to restrictions and space limitations? So it's going to be tough, but we're going to work through, sometimes it's going to be an individual basis, working with families to provide solutions. You know, we do have a, an equity solution within our plan to where if it's needed for, for students to be in person more days at a middle or a high school, we will work, we will look at that on an individual basis and make that adjustment if we need to.
Yeah, my biggest concern would be at-risk students. Students who are already at risk, who don't have the infrastructure to be able to support a virtual learning environment and what would we be able to do to focus on them? You know, there are a lot of kids whose parents are, you know, finding other solutions, creating pods, I've read all sorts of solutions with respect to how they're going to educate their children, but then you have the population that doesn't have that support. And so how Warren County supports those students is of interest to me.
Right, and, and one of the things is that, that, just to, in short, to answer that, increase days if need to at that, at that level that they may need. So, and we're doing that even with our special education population as we go through our, our individual education plans right now, we're having those meetings, teams are determining if those students need additional days. And then we will bring those students in additional days outside of their normal day that they would be in person anyway.
Okay, thank you. I know it's challenging.
Oh, it's, it's, it is, yes ma'am.
You have to, you have to manage every possible situation.
Well, every time you think you have a solution, you have five more issues pop up, so.
If I'm understanding you correctly, your special need, special needs children, say those, those children that can't do virtual, or they have difficulty with virtual learning, you will work with them as, on an individual basis and if they have to come in to get their instruction?
Yes, we're working on, on that, that, that's a solution. If, if there is a need for, maybe it's internet access or maybe it's, it's because of an IEP that a student may need additional days, then we are going to accommodate that. And our schools are prepared and ready to accommodate those solutions that, that we're coming up with as they arise and as we find out if they are needed.
Yeah, I was just asked that yesterday, so that's good, it's good to hear because I didn't have an answer for.
Yes. So for instance, if you have a student that's in the seventh grade, that maybe it's an equity-based or maybe it's an IEP and their day is Monday, but it's determined we need to bring them in Tuesday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday, then we will bring them in those additional days to help them out and to provide services in person versus remotely.
I have one more thing.
Yes, sir.
From a, a COVID point of view, from the disease itself? What do you feel is your timeframe from, to learn when a child gets, gets the disease or gets the, gets the bug that's going to cause a real problem across the board?
Yeah.
Not just that individual, you've got a lot of kids that are going to be with him and it's a, it's kind of a herd mentality. They're great in the classroom, but as soon as they get outside, they're all over everybody.
Right.
And I'm hoping that you're planning to do something about that too. It's difficult, but can, can you walk me through that just a little to, so I'll know how long it's going to be before you discover that they've got it and, and you're actually quarantining and doing something different?
Well, and a lot of that, yes, sir, a lot of that's going to follow DDH guidance. And so there's a document that I have provided that...
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah. And so Dr. Green has, has generously helped us with, with providing this, but really, you know, if we notice symptoms or a, a student or staff members exhibiting symptoms and that's, that, that student or staff member will have to go to our, our care room where they will be checked, looked at, then they may be, you know, if it's a student, the parent will be called to go to the CP, PCP. And the, the thing about this is that at that point in time, all of our nurses have been trained in contact tracing and so they may start the initial contact tracing and getting the information of where that student was, who they've been around, did they exhibit all of our mitigation strategies as far as social distancing, wearing the face covering? You know, if it's a, a high school student that they stayed away, they made sure they were six feet apart, because the defining factor is, were you, or were you not wearing a face covering and were you exposed for 15 minutes to somebody? That either started showing symptoms two days prior, so now you're really having to back up. So when we look at that, we would have to start looking at the tracing from when those student, when that student or, or individual started exhibiting symptoms and moving forward, looking backwards then. Now, of course, we're going to follow the guidance if, and as it states in this document, it could be that only one individual is, is required to quarantine because everything was followed. It could be that three people out of a classroom, or it could be multiple classrooms, it could be a school. Each case is going to be taken individually at a, at one time. So we will look at each individual case, we will be in constant communication with the Virginia Department of Health as we work through making our way to a determination of, of what to do. Now for schools, we need to know quickly as possible. And you know, some of these tests, they're not the rapid test. Some, some, some tests are taking up to three days for, for you to get them back. And that's, that's one of the things that, that concerns me as, you know, yes, we, we quarantine that, but then we have to go back and we have to start looking at those individuals that were within that, that scope of wearing a mask or not wearing a mask for 15 minutes and then quarantining those people. So it may be that we, we not have to close an entire school. It will be one case at a time, but we want to try to make a decision as quickly as possible. If we do have a case, now we have, we already have letters established that will go out to the, to the parents and to the, the community of that school. You know, if we have something that happens at Skyline High School, we don't need to send, necessarily need to send the letters to, to Warren County High School unless there's, maybe they, they went to Blue Ridge Technology Center together, then you have to send it to both high schools. So, so there's a lot of different things that you're playing into when it comes to determining and making a decision. It's going to be tough to make that decision with everything that we have to follow and as quickly as we can get the information.
Do you have quick tests?
Do we have quick tests? We have been talking to, I was on a call yesterday with the, with Valley Health and they had talked about maybe being able to help and assist schools with some of those quick tests. So we're going to follow through and I, and also with the Virginia Department of Health. So I was on a call yesterday with that group and we were discussing, is there a way to, to get some of those quick tests to where if, maybe if we have a cluster that they can come up to, to that site and do a quick test on 20 to 50 people at a time, just to see maybe yes, it's, it's, it's isolated here or no, it's not, it's bigger than what we thought. So we're working through those solutions still, but that was on the call yesterday for support.
I, I know that your job is extremely difficult right now and I appreciate everything that you're trying to do. And I'm hearing things are happening and our kids are going to go back to school, but we need to, can't stress it hard enough and I know that you already know this, we need to watch them all of the time. And as soon as somebody gets sick, that's when you react and that's going to be a tough time. And like I said, I appreciate everything that you're doing. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Town of Front Row, I'm Mr. Teedrick. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Chairman, forgive me, and members of the board, interim county administrator, Mr. Daley, good morning. First of all, I'd like to say this, the audio sounds great in this room and the video quality is fantastic. So as you guys know, we have the new Swaget system in place and I think we all deserve to, or we all should give Todd Jones and Duane a pat on the back for a job well done in a timely manner. I think the system is working very well. As far as just some comments that I have, the CARES Act, the first round Front Row applications, they were a tremendous success. We've already distributed over 71 businesses, to 71 businesses over, close to $700,000. We took a pause, a one-week pause to evaluate and reevaluate. We did some additional advertising and that seems to have been very successful as well. Within the first couple of days, we had over 15 grants, grant applications, another $145,000. As of Friday, we had 14 additional more for another 127. So we're going to be close to that $970,000 and, and giving checks out to 100 different businesses. And according to the Chamber of Commerce, a big thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and the CARES, CARES Act Committee that's been established, the volunteers, it's been, it's been very well received from businesses. We had several businesses who said, we are probably going to be shutting down our businesses at the end of the month, but this is going to be able to keep us going for several months. So it's been a, been a real success. And as you know, the county is fronting, or the town is fronting that money. We haven't received funds yet from the county as we're trying to work through, work through an agreement, which leads me to item 4F. I don't know exactly how you do your consent agendas, I don't know if you plan to adopt all items or you're planning to pull an item, but Mr. Daley and I had conversations on Thursday regarding item 4F and what appears in the packet appears to be pretty much the same agreement that, that the county had drafted in the first time. Is that, was that changed or did you guys, is that going to be pulled off for discussion or?
I, I'm Jason Hamm, it's nice to make your acquaintance.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Teedrick. I originally sent a draft of the agreement to Mr. Napier on June 24th. That wasn't the one that you currently have. He looked at it, I called him on the phone, we were actually on the phone when I sent it to him and he said it looked okay to him, but he needed to send it to others in town. I then on August the 10th sent him really the, the final version and that first one that I sent in June was the Kill Moroc document that I understand that you gave to Mr. Daley a few days ago. And so on, and I called on the 17th of August, a week after I'd sent it because of course, we know that the town is distributing money and the town residents or county residents and we want you to have the money, but we also need to have the agreement done. So I called him on the 17th of August, Mr. Napier, and he promised that he would send me what were the changes. I deliberately sent the document in Word, you know, a common thing for lawyers to do is, is, you know, you put in the things that you want changed, so it's shown in red line. So I got an email from Mr. Napier that evening after we had talked that said, this is the final version, the finance director and I were batting around, it's not redlined, I can try to recreate the changes for you or you can probably do it as well. So I mailed him back a few hours later. If the county accepts these changes, is this agreement acceptable to the town and can it be used for the second round of, round of CARES Act funds as well? If so, the county could probably approve it later today. This was the 18th of August and again, you know, there's urgency here.
Sure.
Please let me know this morning if possible. And the response was, I'm circulating this to the town manager and finance director for their input as I am not the final authority. My initial guess is this will be a reasonable template, but don't hold the town to that. So we got some changes from the town on the 18th of August, but we didn't get, hey, if you change this, we'll sign it, which is what we need. I, the changes were put in several places, there were really three changes that the town had requested. In several places, it was written in accept as otherwise provided herein as an exception to the town taking the risk that the CARES Act funds are improperly expended. And that's not acceptable to the county. As you probably know, the, the document that the county had to sign, provided from the Commonwealth of Virginia in order to get this money in the first place, said, share it with the town, but if anybody spends it incorrectly, it's not the town's problem, it's the county's problem. And so all over the Commonwealth, people are signing similar agreements. And again, your town attorney was on two occasions told me it looks okay to him, but there's other people he has to report to. So the accept as otherwise provided herein language wasn't okay and I told Mr. Napier that. The town wanted some, there was a portion of the agreement that the town wanted to add, which I did accept, which was that the town offers to pay, you know, if the event that a federal or state authority says, hey, what the town did is incorrect, then, you know, the town would, and this is what the town wanted and I have put this in this agreement, the town will go ahead and pay for the county's legal expenses of fighting. You know, that's reasonable, that's fine. I mean, if it's, the town's ultimately on the hook, but the county can help out, the county will be made whole, fine, I did that. There was a signature page for the attorney and the clerk to sign, which is not legally necessary, but I agreed to that and I changed that. There were a bunch of stylistic changes, made the document very confusing to read because it wasn't redlined and basically it was consolidation of a whole bunch of different paragraphs. I didn't accept those because there's, you know, lots of county staff members who had seen that document, it made it very confusing and hard to read. So the document with those changes is what's now presented to the county for approval. So after I got the email back from Mr. Napier on the 18th of August, where he basically said, it's a reasonable template, but don't hold the town to that.
Was that the same, was that the same one where you said he'd share it to other staff to review?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not, he made it clear, he's not the final authority, but again, we've had a lot of time pass at this point and, and again, there's urgency here. You just reported you've spent $907,000.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So on the 19th, the, the next morning, I emailed Mr. Napier, do you have an update on this? I didn't get a response. On the 24th, I mailed again, can you please give me a call about this? The county would like to complete this agreement. That was on Monday the 24th. I, I didn't get a response to that. So on the-
And then I met with Mr. Daly on Thursday.
Okay. So on the 25th, Tuesday of last week, a week ago from today, I, I sent this email. Doug, I have accepted some of the town's requested substantive changes and made this agreement apply to all CARES Act funds provided to the town. The requested stylistic changes, which largely consisted of consolidating paragraphs, have not been accepted as it makes this document hard to compare against the prior draft. There are reasons why the other changes are not acceptable to the county. For example, in all circumstances, it is the town's responsibility to comply with CARES Act and the agreement is not subject to being litigated by a third party. So the forum selection clause is valid as is. There was, there's a forum selection clause that says if there's an argument between the county and the town, then it's to be tried in the, in the courts of, of Warren County, which is entirely reasonable. And someone had put in there, not Mr. Napier, that if someone removes it to a federal court, some third party. Well, that's not, it's not a contract between third parties. It's a contract between the town and, and the county. So I, I finished with saying, this version is going to the Warren County Board of Supervisors Agenda Package later this week for the 9-1 meeting, today's meeting. If there are any changes, we will need to have them ironed out by the end of the day tomorrow. As you know, the CARES Act funds must be spent by the town by 12:120 and in order to provide sufficient time to the town, we must finalize this agreement. So when I sent this on the 25th of August, I had had for a, a full week, the town's requested changes, but with the language, don't hold the town to that. So I then emailed Mr. Napier the next day, the, on the Wednesday, when I didn't hear from him. Per our conversation of yesterday, if there's anything else to do, let's work on it today. I didn't hear back from him on that. So, you know, if, if the board wants to kick it down the road for two more weeks, I'm not sure that's a good idea. And I, I would recommend that if there are specific changes, maybe the board wants to take a five-minute break and we could try to redline something right now. But if we can't do that, I would recommend that the county adopt this as is today. And that doesn't mean that it couldn't come back and be modified later. But I'm very concerned because I didn't know until this very minute from you, Mr. Teedrick, or I guess I, I heard from-
Oh, yeah, that's unfortunate because I had that meeting on Thursday.
From Doug. I did, I'm sorry. I did hear from Ed that, hey, you know, we don't really like that. We want this agreement. Well, what you handed him was the original one that I had sent to you. So that doesn't, wasn't really helpful.
Right.
So, you know, and basically-
So you're satisfied with the original KAMARC agreement?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
That is the, the basic nuts and bolts of it, but it's-
Okay, right.
Between the town of Kill Morak and someone else, so that obviously needs to be changed.
Right.
Also, they, we want to make sure that the agreement is enforceable. And so there are a lot of changes that have been made to it. But the basic nuts of it is that, which I think is, is at least in principle, agreed to between the attorneys, is that if the town makes a mistake with respect to the CARES Act funding, it's the town's problem, not the county's.
Right.
Really is much more complicated than that.
Right.
There is other things put in there to, to benefit the county. And I'll tell you, if, if the changes that were actually presented to the county are, are the ones that are acceptable to the town, you know, we, we can possibly work back to that if that's something you need to do and if we need to take a little break to do that.
Right.
My concern is if this board doesn't approve something today, isn't this going to put you in a bind because you need the money?
No, it's not gonna put us in a bind. So, Mr. Chairman, let me, let me, thank you for that in-depth legal analysis. Regrettably, I'm not an attorney. Attorneys tend to deal in the law and I tend to deal in reality. So the situation I found myself in, when I saw the document that was presented, I circulated it to several people. The, the problem we have, in the document as it's currently written, attorneys don't deal in the procedure. In the process, they deal in the law. So the attorneys probably came to a legal general understanding, not realizing the ramifications. There's a bureaucratic element that's established in this document that is problematic to the town. It's basically forcing us to expend all the funds end of September in order to meet the deadlines that are set up within the agreement to be approved by the county so that we can receive the funds and have them received by December 30th. The CARES Act wasn't established to jam in the expenditures in such a short time period. Personally speaking, I think it'd be very wise for the town and the county to exercise maximum flexibility so that we have until November and December to find out how, what impact coronavirus and the pandemic's having on our community so that we can adjust as necessary. It's my understanding, the KAMARC document that, that Mr. Hamm referenced, has been vetted with hundreds of attorneys across the Commonwealth. I believe this was the first contract that was actually ratified between a county and a town. And it's a simple two-page, I believe, two-page document, whereas this is a six-page document. So I don't know that we need, the town is perfectly willing to assume all liability. The town is perfectly willing to certify according to the CARES Act that we will spend the money according to the CARES Act and the procedures. And that's really in, in premise. That's really all that's necessary. So I can tell you, as it's currently written, it's very problematic. I don't know that the town's gonna be able to sign it as it's currently written. I understand Mr. Hamm having conversations with our, our town attorney. I can't speak for my town attorney. I can only speak as far as the reality of administering the funds. We know how to do it. We've been doing it. We anticipate doing it again, but I can't, I can't, I'm not gonna spend the next round of funds until we get a contract, which is, I think, what everyone's intention is. So with that, you guys handle it as you wish. I would recommend pulling that item off. Let's have some more, one more round of discussion. Two weeks is not gonna hurt us in the least bit. It's not gonna hurt you. It's not gonna hurt us. So we're perfectly fine. If it takes two weeks to get it right, I'd rather get it right and have maximum flexibility, simplicity. Town's willing to certify and we're willing to assume all liability for the funds the county gives us. And I can state that publicly as well as we can do it in written form.
So, sir, I, I didn't really get any input at all from, from your town attorney on this.
Yeah, I've got that.
And I absolutely did have a lot of input with Rick Farrell, who works for the county and who is very much involved in the on-the-ground issues of how to spend the money. The agreement is not overly complicated. It is, actually has one page of whereas is and three pages instead of two of language. But, you know, the first section says, we'll give you two and a half million. The second section says, you can only spend it on COVID. The third says, you will keep and provide to the county all documents necessary. The fourth section says that the expenditure by the town, of the town distribution by the town is at its sole risk. The fifth says the town has got to expend the money by December 1st. The sixth says the town will fully comply with all requirements of the CARES Act. And the seventh says if the town doesn't, the county is reimbursed within 10 days. The eighth says that in security for repayment, that the town agrees that various contracts that have with the county would be subject to the repayment obligation.
Yeah, no issue with any of that so far?
Okay. So the ninth says that the, if any federal or state authority asserts that the county owes money as a result of the actions of the town, the town waives its right to assert the defense of statute of limitations.
Right.
Now, you might consider that overly complicated.
No, here's, here's the, here's the onerous part of it. The town using such funds for expenses that are reimbursable under act upon the town providing documentation to the county sufficient to prove that the expenses are reimbursable. That, so to me, that's a very, that's an onerous, so we, so our town staff has to gather all this documentation. We just, we just had 100 applicants. We have to compile all this documentation. We also have to get canceled checks. We have to submit it to the county. The county's gonna take all this time to review and, and then there's subjectivity. They can select, pick and choose and we've already expensed the funds. So there's, again, I, Mr. Chairman, it wasn't my intention to debate this tonight. It was my intention to ask a question whether this item was gonna be approved. I'm asking you to pull it so we can continue dialogue and discussion. I have other items I need to discuss as well. I think that paragraph is problematic. I shared it with Mr. Daly on Thursday and regrettably, it wasn't, it wasn't well received by the attorney. So that's, that's our, our concern with that paragraph.
And I, and I might be happy to do that and I can be done in the next few seconds. I really did want to respond to your assertion that there were portions of the agreement that were somehow complicated or not okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the one particular section that is-
Okay. And that's what I'm trying to flush out because I haven't, through numerous phone calls and emails, been able to flush out the issue.
Again, I appreciate you wanting to flush that out.
So I guess my question is, how is the town distributing money if it doesn't have documentation from folks showing that it's CARES Act eligible?
Well, see, if we're, if we certify that we're gonna spend the funds according to the CARES Act and, and we know how to follow the CARES Act and you were, we're liable in the event we miss, miss, misspend any funds, the county has no issues with that. There's no issues. If we certify, and currently we have documentation on those 100, 100 applicants, as you will, through our portal that we're helping you build.
Okay. And those would be subject to FOIA anyway. Is there an issue with the town providing those documents?
Of course, there's no, there's no issues with the town, town providing, no. And most of that is not subject to FOIA.
I don't quite understand what the problems are, but, you know, if, if you're telling me that, that the town can definitely kick this down the road till the 15th of September.
Sure.
I, I don't know if that's correct or not, but if the board wants to do that, they certainly may.
Ms. Chairman, moving on to public works. The construction of 17th Street Slip Lane beside Sheets is underway. Curbing gutter and sidewalks are in and paving is scheduled for September 16th, weather dependent. The town is working on rehabilitation of East Stonewall Drive Bridge. Rehabilitation should be completed and a bridge reopened between September 21st and 25th. Once again, weather dependent. The contractor recently finished repaving of 522 from a water break that occurred near the regional jail. The rehabilitation of the Fairground Road Water Tank was completed several weeks ago. The contractor is now working on rehabilitation of the Guard Hill Water Tank. Contractors for the town continue to work toward reducing the inflow and infiltration of storm water on the town sanitary sewer district. I would let you know as well as all county residents that there's gonna be a significant amount of, of improvements on our, on our storm sewer system as well as there's gonna be a lot of work, a lot of contractors. Currently, we have four contractors all over town. There's gonna be more in the coming year. It's gonna get a little worse as far as the, the road conditions before it gets a lot better. We have a significant paving plan planned as well. Citizens may see contractors smoke testing areas and receive door hangers notifying them of testing. This process will allow a contractor to locate areas in which storm water may be entering the town sanitary sewer district. And I'm here to attest that the smoke test works well. We had our town hall building smoked out Friday on the second floor from a dry water trap. So the custodian was in there at seven o'clock in the morning and, and got smoked out of the building temporarily, but it works well. Crews continue the camera lines to locate problematic areas of the sanitary sewer system. The CIPP lining, open cut and manhole replacement efforts continue as well. Electric department continues with the Chantel fiber lines. That's going very well, a little bit ahead of schedule. The finance, as it relates to finance, the unaudited town revenues for FY '20, which we, we really, like you, we're really concerned about how we're gonna end the fiscal year. It looks very promising. We, we're actually very, very favorable. Meals tax, we collected 99% of what we budgeted, even with the pandemic. Lodging tax, we collected 84%. Sales tax, we were 7% above. Pilot that the town collects, we were 8% above. The electric and refuge were on target and water and sewer is a little bit below budgeted amounts. The town is currently working on preparing this FY CAFR and is on track to have it completed by November as required by the Auditor of Public Accounts. And I'm pleased to announce that for the 32nd year, the town finance department received the GFOA award. And as a general matter, the town is gonna continue to close Main Street on weekends, Friday, 4:30 PM to Monday, 7 AM. We are adjusting the, the street closure. The street closure's gonna be closed from Chester and Main and we're gonna move the closure from Main and Royal to Main and Crescent. So we're gonna try to open up those side streets and allow a little bit more flexibility and transportation for vehicle or traffic. That concludes my report. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
I don't have any, any, anybody from the board?
I had one, just to clarify. You're saying that if we push the, the green with the talent to the 15th, that does not hurt you all?
Well, no, provided that we're able to have some flexibility in, in the timing of our spending so that we don't have months of, of determination whether an expenditure was, was approved or not. So no, we'd have no problem. I mean, we can turn this around. I can have the money spent in two weeks like I've, like we've done before.
And then Mr. Hamm, is there any negative effect on the county if we push this back two weeks? Or Mr. Daly, whoever?
I guess, you know, town residents or county residents, and that's my concern. And I, you know, haven't been able to sort of analyze with a calendar when the next town meeting might be. I'm also concerned that we've talked for some time without really getting back from the, I mean, I heard tonight and I very much appreciate, or this morning and I heard, very much appreciate what the real concern is. Didn't know that till now.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry that wasn't related to you Thursday or Friday.
Well, my concern is that we go another two weeks and then we have an 11th hour discussion and then we really are in absolute trouble.
Yeah, that'd be a concern.
So, you know, I mean, I, 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 if you, when can you all have actual changes to this document to us?
I've, I've handed, I've, if we can go back to the KAMARC document, I think that's satisfactory document.
Well, that's not satisfactory to the county.
So there, there, there's a rub. So I guess you have to tell us why that's not satisfactory. And again, if we need to have an offline conversation and sit down and understand your greater concerns, that document was vetted through VML. That document is, is used as the template in our county, in our state rather, for contracts between town and counties. It's the template and-
Yeah, I disagree with that. I spoke with the person who wrote it, James Cornwell, and, and sure, it's a template, but it needs to be tailored. And I read to you two-thirds of this document and the only thing you disagreed with was one small portion.
Right, the one-third, the one-third's the problem.
So, for example, you know, perhaps it would be helpful, and you guys have this in Word, for you to X that part out and send it to me. And, you know, this is, I don't wanna go back to, to the first, you know, drafting of this that wasn't ever my first draft.
Mr. Chairman, we have two weeks. If you pull it off the agenda, we have two weeks to work it out.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Chairman?
I don't have any, anybody else.
Do you know, Mr. Teedrick, when you would be able to have any comments or changes to this document beyond what you've told me today?
Yeah, so we can move very quickly. So, very quickly. Yeah, we have a board meeting Monday night.
By the end of the next few business days, you think that that might be able to happen?
I believe that's possible. But are you gonna have a special meeting? Or do we have two weeks?
Well, I, I, if we need to, I guess maybe we will. But, you know, again, my concern is we've spent a lot of time really not getting anywhere just yet. And if it's possible to get something back from the town within the next two or three business days, it would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you'll find a town to move very quickly on this.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hamm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Reports, board members? Mr. Carter?
The only thing, I guess we had a meeting, Ms. Cullors and I, along with the rest of the CARES Committee for the county yesterday. And I don't know if Mr. Farrell or Ms. Shirocky, maybe Ms. Shirocky could just tell us the process, how, how people can find it online, paper applications, when the dates are, whoever. And maybe it'll be discussed later. I just thought the more we put it out there, the better. People will catch it.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. Yesterday, we released our news release that is related to the Warren County CARES Act program. It was published this morning. The website is live right now minus the links to the actual applications. So the public can go to the website. They can see it. They can, they can see what are the small business requirements, what are the nonprofit requirements and what are some of the general requirements for the utility assistance. On Tuesday morning, the 8th, at nine o'clock, Emily will publish the three links for the applications. At that point, the process will be live. We will also have paper copies of the applications here at the Government Center, at Social Services and over at the chamber. If folks choose to do a paper application, they can do that. They'll just need to fill it out and then it will get returned to the chamber for processing. So we won't collect any of those, those here. They'll go straight back over to the chamber. Our process, our first window will be open until the 21st of September, at which point we'll see how much money we've expended in each of the categories. And then I will come back to you all with a recommendation on how to repurpose any of the remaining funds, because we do anticipate remaining funds. remaining funds. And we have a couple ideas we'll present during work session and/or the next board meeting. What we discussed yesterday was just being very flexible with this process and putting a placeholder for each subsequent work session and/or board meeting, so we can, we can make changes quickly and get the money into the hands of the folks that need it.
And the website's WarrenCountyVA.net, and that'll take you to the Cares Act money?
If you go to our website, Emily and I, she did a great job. As soon as you open the website, the very first thing, instead of seeing the canoe on that big picture, it's going to be the Warren County Cares Act portal. That'll be there for about five to seven seconds. You can click on that big box there, or right below it, it'll have the first press release, which is the Warren County Cares Act press release. You can click on that button as well. If you go down a little bit further on the page, you'll see a little COVID information in those eight boxes. You click on that, and that will take you to a link to the, to the webpage as well. So, I think, I think the webpage is set up very nicely for folks to be able to find the information with just one click.
And webpage is up and running now. However, people can access the applications to look at, but they're not going to be able to actually fill them out until the eighth. Is that correct?
No, sir. They can't look at the applications.
Cannot look at the applications.
Now, they can see what their requirements are in the general for the application.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all I've got. Mrs. Oats?
Yeah, I, just a couple things. I met with Norfolk Southern, the Inland Port, with respect to the proposed flyover at Rockland Road. There will be information going forward, but for the last two weeks, and I'm going to knock on wood, I haven't been contacted with any blockages at those intersections. So, it was well received. The, they were very helpful and very willing to partner, and so I have, I'm very encouraged by the initial meetings. And Mrs. Colors and I started our third class with VACO toward becoming a certified county supervisor last week. So, that's in process, and that's all I have today. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. I, I visited Shenandoah District citizens on Sunday, rode the roads after that, visited the Shenandoah District citizens on Wednesday. I discussed the Shenandoah area and the organization as a whole. We, I did an emergency management meeting, which is our regular meeting, on, on Wednesday, had, had our briefing from all of the departments. I visited the HR department, discussed existing needs and future and upcoming needs, visited the Town Chamber of Commerce, discussed upcoming Cares Act and processes. Of course, I emailed departments and citizens, phone calls, and I traveled the Happy Creek District with Mr. Carter, and it, visited a lot of the, a lot of his area, and I also had lunch two times this week on the, on Main Street. So, that was, that was it for me. Mrs. Colors?
I attended the Community Advisory Committee meeting that the Sheriff's Department has. I thought it started at seven, so I was late getting there, and I'm sorry, I missed it. Major Driscoll put on a very informative presentation, and I look forward to coming again if I, if I can. And I want to remind people that tonight, the lineup is six-thirty, Mr. Rattigan, for the Back Blue Parade.
Yes, yes.
And look forward to, to being there. Did my monthly road checks where I ride around, and took my grandsons with me this time, and gave them some reminiscing of where I grew up and how things have changed a little over the years. But, I'm pleased to say the roads are in pretty good condition for the amount of rain that we've had lately. Would encourage people, if you're going to go out to the river, it's up, so be safe when you go out to the creeks and the rivers. The rain has definitely got those up a little bit. I'm hoping, Dr. Ballinger, that school starts out. I've got a kindergartner and a second grader starting next week. One's excited, the other one, not so excited. But, you know, I, I look forward to working with the schools and, and give you best wishes on a good school year, and that parents will be patient with the process, because I know it's, it's hard when kids start school on a regular school year, and this year being difficult for everybody. It's going to be a little different. And from being a former school nurse, I encourage parents, the worst thing you can tell your child is if you don't feel good, go to the nurse, because that's the first thing they do when they get there. Call the nurse and tell them, give them the heads up. They will be glad to check on them for you. But, it's the kiss of death if you tell them, don't feel good, go to the nurse, because that's all they think about all day. And that's all I have.
Mr. Daly, our Enron County Administrator?
No, Mr. Fox.
Mr. Fox.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Fox.
That's quite all right. Mr. Chairman?
I'm not going to let you talk today.
I attended Airport Commission meeting on the twenty-fifth, and the Airport Commission is considering hiring a new manager, and Mr. Roxcopo gave a presentation, and that's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Now, Mr. Daly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are in week, month six of our COVID program, and the big thing, well, we have lots of things to be concerned with, but the big thing to be concerned with, Mr. Chairman, is those people who are vulnerable, those people who could fall out that we don't catch and we don't take care of. And so, we would like to recognize our community liaise on Michelle Smeltzer for her work in trying to make sure that we address the needs of those vulnerable populations during the pandemic, food and clothing distributions, working to extend the thermal shelter, and also coming up and launching the County Resources App for Android phones, and some time, maybe we can get up to the, those other phones, whatever. I have a droid. And we appreciate she continues doing that work, and we want to thank Michelle Smeltzer very much for what she's doing. Yesterday was Deputy County Administrator Bob Childress's last day with the county, after he retires twenty-two years with VDOT, ten years with the county, and we are looking, hoping that Bob enjoys his retirement. One of the issues brought up earlier there, we are in the process of advertising for a new Director of the Shenandoah Farms. So, we will be advertising and hopefully filling that position soon. In the meantime, Mr. Berry is working with all of the districts in addition to his other Public Works activities, and he also has the airport. John Munch will be leaving the end of this week. He's going back to Prince William County, and Andre Fletcher will be handling our county finances during the interim. We have advertised for a finance director, and we'll be filling that quickly. As Beth mentioned, John March, Martz, correct, say it correctly there, will begin work next week, next Tuesday, as our new Director of Social Services, and we appreciate what Beth has been doing for us, and we're hoping she'll hang around for a little while to help us with the transition and help us with a couple of more things. And Mrs. Colors will work on that workshop for Social Services, getting that on one of your work sessions, how they are funded, how that funding works, and how it fits in there. Maybe that's something you and Mr. Martz can do, you can bring him for show and tell, and you can explain the system next, next Tuesday. And with that, we remind you that you have drafts for the Broadband Committee and the Railroad Task Force, and I have received recommendations from the Chairman and from Mr. Carter, and they have been incorporated into this, and we will send these out to you today, depending upon how long you stay today, and get these out to you so that you can mark them up to have them back, so we can talk about them next Tuesday. And also, your goals for the upcoming year. I have five goals from the Chairman with four alternates, so that's a straw man that kind of modifies what I gave you originally, but takes that, and you can work with that to try to work this down. And that would be separate from our project list, which I'm working on at this time. And that, be happy to answer any questions.
I have one question. Just to make sure, I know in the meeting yesterday with the Cares and Committee and the Chamber, there's some concerns over the contract. Has that been taken care of, or do we need to pull that from the consent agenda and discuss further?
I was going to talk about that in my report, Mr. Carter.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry. Didn't know who to ask, so that's fine.
We'll get to that in just a minute.
Okay, okay.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Daly.
Thank you.
Mr. Hamm, Enron County Attorney?
Mr. Ray Bramble, the President of the Chamber of Commerce, immediately before this meeting, maybe ten, fifteen minutes before, has given me some, requested changes from the Chamber of Commerce. And so, what I would suggest that the board do would be to pull items F four and F five from the consent agenda, which is the agreement with the town and the agreements with the Chamber, and amend the agenda in section K three to include the end and legal issues regarding the Town and Chamber Cares Act agreements. And then I can discuss with you in closed session some of the comments that Mr. Tidrick made today, which I understand is, some of the town's possible yet to be determined requested changes, and also the changes requested by the Chamber. And then we can at least keep moving this forward on our end, so that hopefully I can talk to them again, and then we can get this thing done, these things done.
That's item number four and item number five?
Yes, sir. And then, and then, you know, if someone was willing to make a motion to amend the agenda, to also include in K three at the end, and legal issues regarding the Town and Chamber Cares Act agreements.
Do you want that question, ma'am?
That would be great.
Then I move that we amend the closed session to add items regarding the Town and Chamber.
Well, if we can be just a little bit more specific.
You want me to read those two off?
Legal issues regarding the Town and Chamber Cares Act agreements. We have to be a little bit more specific.
Okay, items concerning the legal, legal, I'm sorry, trying to write it and say it at the same time. It's not working for me. Regarding, the legal issues regarding the Town and Chamber over the Cares Act.
Agreements.
Agreements.
Is there a second?
Were you going to add a Chamber also?
I did. I said Town. That, I got in there every time. It was the other.
Mrs. Oats, you seconded that?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Shirocky, could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Do we also need to make a motion to amend the agenda?
Yeah.
Say to pull those?
Yep, to pull, well, I guess we should wait and see if there's anything else that needs to be pulled.
Uh, yeah, that's what I had suggested, but absolutely, you can do that next under the consent agenda. I would request that we pulled items four and five and others, or at least maybe table those until the next meeting.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended with items number four and number five, and the addition of the legal, legal issues on K three?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. So, now, Mrs., we've properly made a motion to amend the agenda to add the closed session. We haven't tabled F four and five just yet. That would be the one remaining item.
Okay, so I got to remove, I got to remove K three. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended with items number four and number five removed for further discussion? Wait, wait. We're just, are we table, are we, we're just pulling those, four and five, yeah, for table.
So, they'll come to another meeting, but they don't come back?
But weren't we deciding on the, the timeframe to bring those back?
Yes, you can certainly talk about that. We would, your staff would recommend that we-
Not trying to confuse anything.
-run it back in the very next meeting, because I think it's important.
I think they're saying, don't pull them, table them.
Okay. The question I had, though, was on number five. How does that impact the agreement with the Chamber? How does that, if we wait till the fifteenth, and they're already going to start, so does that affect it?
That's one of the things we're going to talk about in the closed meeting. We may end up coming back out of the closed meeting and deciding to approve it as is.
Okay.
Yes, you're right. That's a concern I have.
Okay. So, don't mess it up, Mr. Hamm. How do we want to say this? We want to, we want to-
Motion to table-
Motion to table items number four and number five?
F four and five.
I move that we approve the consent agenda and table items four and five.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries? So, consent agenda is now done correctly. I mean, we've been round and round.
It's done.
Okay, it's done. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the request for increased spending authorization in order to respond to COVID nineteen. Mr. Daly and Mr. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've had additional expenditures from the schools, and because of the extension of the timeframe, we are requesting that you approve the authorization of up to $500,000 from current $300,000.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Supervisors authorize and appropriate an additional $200,000 for a total maximum appropriation of $500,000 in funds for COVID nineteen response and recovery operations, authorized and coordinated through the County Administrator and direct the County Administrator to seek, recover such funds pursuant to the Stafford Act forty-two, USC, five-one-twenty-one, SCL, or any other appropriate funding source.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Mrs. Shirocky, could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Motion carries? Next is item H, the request for the pay scale adjustment for communications officers and additional dispatcher positions. Mr. Butler, or, I don't know if Mr. Butler's here? Hi, Major. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here on behalf of the sheriff, who, let me move this so you can hear me, who is out of town at the moment. I'm here to address any questions you have on this. The sheriff has, over the last few months, taken a look at salaries across the board within our organization, and one of the places that was woefully deficient was in the area of our nine-one-one communications officers. We have exceptional people, typically work at minimum staffing, and this year's been exceptional challenges for them, having to work above and beyond, not only when they're scheduled to work, but coming in and overtime. So, in looking at what they get paid, we strive to be a first- So in looking at what they get paid, we strive to be a first choice community where we not only can recruit, but can train and retain very best people. And we do have some exceptional folks. To put it in contrast, sheriff kind of looked at, well, what are they worth as far as minimum salaries? I mean, what attracts somebody to us starting at a job? And you can go out and indeed, put in front row and put in our pay rate, and you can get a job at Sheets and some of these other areas. So we're, we're paying some young folks right out of high school to, you know, where you go pay for your gas and buy your cigarettes, the same pay as we pay our folks starting who have not only the first responders' lives in their hands, but the interests of our community. So to better serve our community and residents, the sheriff put together a proposal to raise the pay increases from level five to level seven for our existing folks. It says not to exceed $30,000. I believe it's actually around $28,000, so it does not exceed the $30,000. The additional recommendation, because as Director Woodall can attest to this, we need additional people to accommodate training and other needs as well as demands that we have day to day. So he's also proposed to exceed no more than $100,000, the hiring of two additional 911 dispatchers at entry level positions, looking at their base pay and benefits. It comes under $100,000, it's actually, I believe, in the 80s. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but looking at them, that's what they are. My understanding is it does not impact the citizens in this year's budget, so it's a reasonable recommendation the sheriff wanted to propose to the board to ensure that we can keep the very best people and attract the very best people in the future. So if there's any questions.
I have a question, if you will.
Yes, sir.
Are you proposing this for this year or for next year?
It would, it would go into effect this year.
This year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it would be immediate, and that's what I'm understanding.
It's a pay, it's a pay adjustment to the existing folks that are working, brings them, the amount varies by person, but within a couple thousand dollars each, it raises them up, puts them all on the same level in the month of September of this year, if approved.
And I guess my next question would be, where would these funds come from because they haven't been appropriated this year?
My understanding is they're within the existing budget, so it's not asking for anything in addition to, it's making some moderations within the confines of the budget that we have right now for this fiscal year.
Okay.
Then the only thing that you've got to worry about is next year.
Correct, sir.
Now, have you devised a plan on how you're going to help pay for that next year?
Yes, sir. The sheriff's looked at for the next fiscal year and doesn't perceive there to be any challenges in adding those two additional people and sustaining that moderate increase in pay for the existing people.
Either, I have a question, either Jody or Mr. Daley. Our intended increases that we expect to make in this year, within November, December, how does that impact the step increases?
Well, taking these, taking this proposal here and dividing it in half, ma'am, if I may, one is the two new positions. And we recommend that you approve those positions for this fiscal year and that then they will be subject to regular budget review for proposal next year, when we see where everything pans out. The second half is the increase to the individuals who are currently employees. And we support that, but we also support very much the concern for our other employees, our social workers, they're under the Sheets wage thing too. And we have people in all of our departments who are going to fit that $15 an hour category. And we have a three-year proposal to upgrade all of the compensation. And we have put money in this year's budget for that and then decide, the board said to hold that because of COVID and see how it pans out until the first quarter. And we will get our first quarter, July, August, September, we'll have that information in October. So that our proposal is that we should then be able to make compensation adjustments for all of our employees. And we would like to make those adjustments with the same time we do these for the communication specialists.
And so they would in effect get an increase?
But it would be October, rather than September.
Within the confines of our salary adjustments that we had already agreed on the three-year plan to upgrade ourselves.
Right, because they are in our system.
Okay. That's what I was trying to determine.
They're part of our system.
Whether or not it was a separate, they were separate employees since they were under a constitutional officer, or if they were included in our salary adjustments.
They are included in our proposals, yes.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
No, I guess my only question, Ms. O'Vell, would that put them anywhere near what, what he is proposing at this point? Seems like it would put them at least fairly there, would it not? With the comprehensive plan on the salaries.
Well, I haven't seen exact numbers out of the sheriff's office that presented exactly where they wanted each person to be on the new grade that they were proposing, and I'm happy to take a look at that. The proposal as it exists, I'm sorry, wouldn't change the grade, but they were definitely identified, and it's a case by case depending on service.
So this, it's going to be addressed?
It would certainly be addressed.
Okay.
And we can work that out to make sure his proposal is comparable to what we are proposing for our county employees.
Okay. So then, then I would make the motion that we approve the two additional positions today and we table the increases until we learn what impact this comprehensive salary plan will have on those individuals.
And the positions would be for this budget year, right?
Yeah, for this budget year. The two positions, they could hire immediately.
Yes, thank you.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Shiroki, could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Colors.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Aye.
Ms. Oats.
Aye.
Mr. Carter.
Motion carries.
No. Mr. Carter did announce.
Oh. No, I was just, since you went straight to the vote and there was no discussion, I just wanted to question that too, as far as it seems like to me, and I understand table until we get the other pay study back, but it seems like to me, given the existing dispatchers, the increase as quickly as possible would be helpful in, you know, with their situation. So is there any way to do that?
Well, we want to get, we want to get everybody's increase as quickly as possible, sir.
I understand that.
Because these employees, all of them, have been working very hard, particularly this last six months, having the COVID added on top of them. And we want to address that as quickly as we can, and we want to have a proposal to the board this next month.
Okay, once you get all the details back with the first quarter, then we'll look at it in October.
That'll be this first, that'll be the end of this quarter, we're in September, so we're talking about the work.
Okay, so at least, at least they'll know it's coming.
Right.
And it just puts it off for a little bit, unfortunately, but there again, okay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Mr. Daley, thank you for the explanation. Thank you for your support.
And we hope to get that out as soon as we can, as soon as those numbers look good. We just don't want to give something out and then have to pull back on anything. We want it, when we do it, we want to know we're doing it right. Because we do appreciate everything.
We have a very logic board as well, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Next on our agenda is the resolution of support VDOT Smart Scale Program project applications. Mrs. Logan.
The VDOT fiscal year 2022 Smart Scale project application process was open to localities in March this year. The program allows localities to submit local transportation priorities to VDOT for evaluation and scoring based on the established Smart Scale program criteria. VDOT will fund and include the projects in the fiscal year 2022, 2027 Six Year Improvement Plan, if selected, which would be updated and go into effect on July 1, 2022. Over the past several months, staff has worked with our local and district VDOT officials to select three candidate projects to include in our fiscal year 2022 applications. The projects were selected based on factors such as safety, need, community impact, and cost. We also considered whether or not a project would score well against other potential statewide projects. As part of the application process, pre-applications were submitted earlier this year, and we submitted, and thanks to the Regional Commission for helping us as well, submit our three applications that their application period closed on August 17, 2020. And we were able to submit three applications for the following projects, Route 55 East and High Knob Road, eastbound right turn lane, and a westbound left turn lane into High Knob subdivision, Route 55 West of Route 678 and 610, west and eastbound left turn lanes onto Fort Valley Road and Bucks Mill Road, and a westbound right turn lane onto Bucks Mill Road, and then the Route 34522 corridor, which is various safety improvements, advancing signal detection, and linked on left turn storage bays between Country Club Road and Fairground Road along the Winchester Road corridor. We left a placeholder in, in our application process for a resolution must be included from the Board of Supervisors by October. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them as best I can.
Any discussion or questions? Good, Chair. Thank you, Chair. We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the attached resolution supporting the submission of the aforementioned projects through the VDOT Smart Scale Program for fiscal year 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can we get a roll call, please, Mrs. Shiroki?
Mr. Carter.
Aye.
Ms. Oats.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Aye.
Ms. Colors.
Aye.
Mr. Fox.
I'd just like to make a comment, if you will. And I think I'm very delighted to see that we might be going forward with this proposed, especially in my district, the Waterloo area, so how about a yes?
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Daley.
The Smart Scale and VDOT applications is one of the things Bob Childress had been doing for us for the past 10 years. And I'd like to thank Taren for picking this up and taking it on as another project over there.
Next thing on our agenda is the public comment period. The public comment period is an opportunity for citizens to give input on relevant county issues, which are not on the board's agenda, and is not intended as a question and answer period. Mrs. Shiroki, has anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Dale Orlovsky.
Yeah, there's a few. Thank you, Dale.
Oh, thank you.
Good morning. Today I'm here to speak in reference to Warren County's website under sanitary districts referring to all Shenandoah Farms as property owners' associations, specifically Shenandoah Farms Property Owners Association. There isn't any POAs in the Shenandoah Farms subdivision. I quote from the Warren County website, "The community's HOA/POA serves as an advisory group to Warren County Board of Supervisors. If an HOA/POA does not exist and/or multiple communities encompassed within the sanitary district, the Board of Supervisors will appoint a advisory board of property owners to represent the community's interest." Shenandoah Farms is a multi-encompassing community. I do not have any financial obligations to property owners of Shenandoah Farms Incorporated, as I do not have a deed to DOT-FI. Neither do I or many other property owners within Shenandoah Farms. The narrative that POS Inc. is a community, POA, is a false narrative that needs to be corrected immediately. A POA is a more powerful organization as regulatory actions that can be taken against property owners within POA, which POSF Inc. does not. Warren County is applying and validating that belongs to a POA. This implies that potential property owners, that all property in Shenandoah Farms belongs to a POA. It could affect anyway, anyone trying to sell or buy property in Shenandoah Farms. Warren County is violating through the county website, validating, excuse me, through the county website that we are a POA, which is fraudulent. I appeal to the Board of Supervisors to remove immediately any reference to any county website that Shenandoah Farms subdivision slash sanitary district as a POA association. I'm providing you a copy of Malat versus POSF Inc., a court case that clearly defines that the property owners living in Shenandoah Farms are not part of a POA. It says so, so highlighted in the copies I gave you. And additionally, POSF Inc. is not a POA. This court case also points out that POSF Inc. properties are not common properties to all Shenandoah Farms subdivision. Stays in there, they're only common properties to POSF people that are assigned to their membership. I request with this information just provided, that the Board of Supervisors immediately abide by its own statement on its own webpage to appoint a multiple encompassing community advisory board of property owners to represent the community's interests, dismiss the POSF Inc., a nonprofit corporation, as their advisory board. Since they are not a POA, they do not meet your criteria on your webpage. Thank you. Any questions? Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mrs. Shiroki, anyone else signed up?
Mr. Chairman, if I could actually address Mr. Orlovsky's comments about the website. So he had raised similar concerns several months ago regarding the language on the website, and at that time, Mr. Childress directed me to amend the website, which I did. And on the same page where he was reading from, it specifically mentions Property Owners Association, Homeowners Association, and/or Other Community Association. So I'm more than welcome to further amend the language on that website, but it does specifically state that on at least two occasions on that same page. I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Ms. Nancy Nguyen?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I did want to address that because when you click on the HOA.
Could, um, Nancy, go on up and talk.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. How are you this day? That was a long board meeting. I just want to let you know, just to answer that question, Dale, what he mentioned, it says Shenandoah Farms Property Owners Association, Ralph Rinaldi, Chairman. There is no such thing as Property Owners Association. I've been working now, I don't know for how long, so glad I got the court case, so now you can see it, they are not a POA. They should not reference themselves at that, but I'll drop that issue. I'm actually here because I want to talk about the POSF budget. I disagree with funding for maintenance of a privately owned common property. I have a bigger issue with paying for POSF operating costs, especially with no accountability. This is part of the reason I hired a private lawyer, because I don't believe this was the intent of the sanitary district to fund a private nonprofit. But until I can get that worked out and sit in front of a judge, I just want to address a few things that really concern me. We're paying out of our sanitary district funds to this nonprofit to actually run their business. We're giving them $4,000 in a budget for a recreational committee. We're paying for their newsletter, $3,675, Community Day, $2,862. If they want to buy hot dogs, then they can take donations, okay? If they want to get a duct tape, they could take donations. We shouldn't be funding that. Okay, also, they have in their budget lakes and dams, but I also know that lakes and dams are covered by the Warren County Sanitary District, so why are you funding that? My biggest issue, well, all of it's a big issue for me, but this community center, $13,000? What kind of rolls up into that $13,000? What exactly are we paying for? The building's paid for, and up until, I don't know if it's a Warren County building now, but it's still not a sanitary property. We paid for a $13,000 roof, you know, we pay the utilities somewhere else in this little budget. You know, there's only two utilities that we pay. We pay, oh, you're going to love this one, we pay the Clark County utility bill for the Ample Theater. Well, I assure the attorney got a copy of the petition and the court order, very well defined, within the boundaries of Warren County. So I'm in the litter box on this now, so I'm just bringing it to your attention that I actually have a problem with it. I really don't believe it was the intention of the sanitary district. So I believe we just need to get back in front of a judge and maybe get clarification. And I think that you paying them this money to run their business needs to be maybe reevaluated or better. needs to be maybe reevaluated or better yet, have them send you a receipt for what they buy. If you, until we can get it resolved, because they certainly aren't giving me accountability on anything. So I want to thank you for your time and let me talk about that. Thank you.
Mrs. Shiroki, is anyone else signed up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Melissa Chapel White.
Hi, I just want to finish what I started earlier. So time goes for me only, okay? Page two of the letter that I turned into you earlier was actually the one that mattered. That was about reports. I only got as far as page one giving the background, which is also the attachment from the 2013 report. So, and the second attachment is emails that go to the reporting. And I went through all the documents I could find on the county website that relate to Shenandoah Farms. And I started trying to put together figures to see if I could come up with an accounting, even though there wasn't one provided. Maybe I could find the figures here and there, sort of like the scarecrow in The Wizard of Oz, an arm over there, a leg over there, but I could put it together, form a whole. No, you can't. Unfortunately, it's not possible. The figures conflict. Documents are missing. The figure will be one thing on one document and one on another. And then another document that was made in 2014 will later have been overwritten with a new document. Other documents are missing, and so it goes. So there's absolutely no way from what's posted. And by the way, the first attachment that I provided to you from 2013, that's not posted. So you can't find that in, in your documents online. So that's also part of why I gave it to, gave you all copies. So that's the problem with that. And then the 2021 budget and the fee increase was based on all these lack of, lack of documents. That was the issue I tried to raise. I was not against a fee increase to fund the roads. You know, my neighbors want roads, I'll sign petitions. It's okay with me. Let's get an accounting, though, because the claim for the fee increase was that there weren't sufficient funds. But it was for the 2021 budget and there were no funding included for 2021 or for the last fiscal year, 19 to 20. So that was my point, is like, A, we need to get an accounting. It should have been given before the fee increase was ever proposed for our money going back. And B, we should have included some money for the two missing years because how do you make your projections without that? So that was my point. Great news for Mr. Daley that they're about to advertise for new sanitary district management. That's wonderful. And what we hope is that when we get somebody in that position, they will follow the plan that was adopted by this board back in 2013 that's on your number one, your first attachment there for how the roads were supposed to be done. They were supposed to be done through that revenue sharing program, where then the county pays 25, Shenandoah Farms pays 25 as sanitary district, and then the state pays 50. Two road projects were done outside of that and they were pushed through. We had, the sanitary district was charged 100%. One of them was on a former POSF board chairman's road. The other one was on a road behind the current board chairman. So in conclusion, as it states in the letter I gave you and the attachments, which I hope you will read, we need to get an accounting and we need better reporting. Thank you.
Mrs. Shiroki, anyone else signed up?
No, Mr. Chairman.
If there is no one else that would like to speak, file a call, then this public comment period is now closed.
Do you want me to read us into closed session?
Yes, please.
All right. I'm going to read us into closed session. I move the board enter into a closed meeting under the provisions of Section 2.273711A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act for the discussion or consideration of the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, and resignation of specific public officers, appointees, and employees of the public body. I further move that discussion be limited to the county administrator and deputy county administrator positions. I also move the board enter to a closed meeting under the provisions of Sections 2.2-3711A7 and A8 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act for consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation and the provision of legal advice regarding the industrial development authority of the Town of Front Royal and the County of Warren, Virginia, the EDA, the Town of Front Royal, the EDA versus Jennifer McDonald et al., the Town of Front Royal versus the EDA et al., and other potential claims and litigations relating to other possible liabilities of the EDA and the recovery of EDA funds and assets. Finally, I move the board enter into a closed meeting under the provisions of Section 2.2-3711A8 of the Virginia Freedom Information Act for consultation with legal counsel for the provision of legal advice regarding Board of Supervisors meeting procedures, procurement, contract issues, and legal issues with regards to the CARES Act agreement with the town and the Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
Any discussion? Could I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Colors?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye. We're in closed session. 10-minute break.